Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this Dare County Board of Commissioners' special call meeting of Wednesday, January the 15th, 2025. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Creef if he would lead us in an invocation.
Lord, Heavenly Father, thank you, God, for this day. Thank you for everything you've provided for us today, Lord. God, thank you for everybody in this room, for them being able to come out and voice their opinions in this democracy that we have in this great country, Lord. God, please give us wisdom and guidance so that we can find a good solution to the problems at hand today, Lord. God bless us in our trip tonight, Lord, and keep us safe as we head down to New Bern, Lord. And please, God, let us leave here in peace. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to, first off, thank everybody for being here this afternoon. Appreciate your attendance. I've called this special meeting today to address once again the potential purchase of the Alexander property that is located in Wanchees. You may recall a number, several months ago, we reached out to Mr. Anderson to see if he would sell the property to the county. And as an FYI, the board was prepared to purchase the property for $2 million, and we would even consider $3 million as a maximum that we would have paid Mr. Alexander for that property. This was several months ago. Mr. Alexander was willing to sell the property at the time to the county. However, he wanted $5 million for the property. He was told on the phone that that was too much for the property, knowing that he had, we knowing that he had purchased it for $1 million. Fast forward, the board has not had any further discussion concerning the purchase of the property because of that actual asking price of $5 million. The board was not willing to purchase the property for the $5 million. This was five times the price that was paid for the property by Mr. Anderson, and the board was not willing to spend Dare County taxpayers' money in this way. What brings us to this meeting today? First, we have three new commissioners on the board. Second, I had a conversation last week with Commissioner Burris about the property. He suggested that perhaps the county could form a special tax to the citizens of Wanchees to purchase the property from Mr. Alexander. He left me with the impression that the citizens of Wanchees would consider this. I told Commissioner Burris on that phone call, when we finished, I would immediately work on this as soon as we hung up. Once we did, I reached out to County Manager Outen and asked him to call Mr. Anderson to see if he was still willing to sell the property and to also have staff run some numbers on what tax rate would be for the citizens of Wanchees for the amounts of $2 million, $2.5 million, and $3 million. The county manager spoke with Mr. Alexander. He said he would consider selling the property and to let him think about it overnight, and he would get back the next morning. County Manager Outen received a call the next morning from Mr. Alexander, and he said his selling price now would be $6 million because he had just cleared the property. Mr. Alexander asked if he should stop progress, and the county manager asked him if he would give the board the time to discuss this, as well as the citizens of Wanchees. With that said, I have asked the county manager to give us those tax rate numbers for the citizens of Wanchees and any other pertinent information that we need to know in order for each commissioner to make their decision today about moving forward with respects to the purchase of the property. So at this time, I'll ask the county manager if he will share with us the data that I asked him to do the research on.
Sure. I'll sort of take you through some of this is going to be a little bit repetitive of what you just said. In 2024, the tax value of this property was $300,600. $300,600 in 2024. In July of '24, area development and construction or construction and development purchased the property for $1 million based on the stamps that were on the deed. In the fall of 2024, I contacted Mr. Alexander to, at the board's request, to talk about a purchase, and at that time, he told us he wouldn't take less than $5 million. Based on the values at that time, that was 16 times the tax value and five times the value of the property, or five times what he paid. And so those discussions ended. Yes, sir?
Do we know who sold the property to Mr. Alexander for $1 million?
I have the deed in my office, but I don't even bring it with me.
That's okay. I'm just curious. Thank you.
The tax value today, we went to, when this came up, I went to the tax assessor to say, okay, what's going to happen when we get our new tax values this year? And the fair market value for 2025 is now going to be $1,028,300. So that's the, that would be the fair market value today. As the chairman said, since the time that we talked, he's cleared the property. Again, when I contacted him a couple of times last week, $6 million was his price that he wouldn't move off of. After our board meeting on the 6th, I think Commissioner Burris and I were standing right over here, and he asked me whether it was possible to create a tax district in Wanchees, kind of like what we do for beach nourishment, where the community would contribute some amount of the cost to purchase that. At that time, he was using half, and he was using the $5 million price because we didn't have the $6 million price at that time. So he was using, $2.5 million would be what he was, what we talked about. So first thing I did is went and looked at the statutes, and later that day, I sent him an email, which I think I copied to all of you, that basically said, we could create that tax district. However, if you're going to create a tax district, you can only use it to purchase property for certain reasons, and there's 10 of them here. And if it's not one of these 10 things that you're going to do with the property, then you can't do it with a tax district. Beach erosion, beach nourishment is one of them, fire protection, recreation, sewage collection, solid waste, water supply, ambulance services, watershed improvement projects, cemetery, and law enforcement, if your population is big enough, which ours is not. So if it's not one of those things, then you can't create a tax district to pay for it. So if we were to decide to purchase this property, we could only use it for one of the things that we're talking about, if you're going to use a tax district to do that.
Bobby, let me ask you a question. Green spaces would not be considered?
Only to the extent that you would call it recreation. If it's recreation, if you could call a park or that recreation, then maybe you could make it fit under that. I'd have to do some digging. I hadn't gone past what it said in the statute, but if that was where you were headed, then we'd have to look to be sure that whatever that use was qualified. My guess is that a park probably would qualify as recreation, but I haven't looked at that. So what does that mean? So if you were going to impose a tax district to do that, if that's what you decided to do, and you're going to use, we have to use the 2025 revow numbers. I asked our tax assessor to give me the value of all the property in Wanchees if, based on the 2025 revow numbers that's coming up. And that number is $312,090,000. So that's the value of everything in Wanchees. Using a one cent tax rate on that value, that would generate, every penny of tax generates So now you go back to what Commissioner Burris asked me, and you look at $2.5 million. So if you were going to use $2.5 million, which would have been half of the $5 million, that's basically 80 cents on the tax rate if you were going to do it once, if you're just going to pay for it all in one go. If you're able to finance it, if you can finance the purchase of the land over 10 years, then it would be 8 cents a year for 10 years on top of your current tax rate, whatever that is. The total tax rate in Wanchees today is 57 cents. So it would take that tax rate to 65 cents for Wanchees. If you use half on what he's now asking for, which is $3 million, so if you're going to generate $3 million, that would take 96 cents to do it one time. And if you did it over 10 years, then that would mean it would be 9.5, 9.6 cents over a 10-year period added to that 57 cent that you're now paying. If you use a $350,000 house and you use that 80 cents, a one-time cost is $5,012. If you divide that over 10 years, it would be, what, $500 a year, right? $5,012 divided by 10. Okay. If you use the 96 when on a $350,000 house, then it would be $600 a year on top of your current bill, based on a house that's valued at $350,000. If you had a house valued at $400,000, then that number becomes $5,728 if you paid it all in one go on 80 cents, or if you finance it over 10 years, $572 a year for 10 years. And similarly, if you use $3 million, if you were going to pay half of it, that's that 96 cent rate, and that would be $6,873 if you paid it all at once, or if you took it over 10 years, it'd be $687 over 10 years. So that would be the, sort of the tax cost if you did it with that. And that assumes everything was revenue neutral and with the new valuation. With that said, again, you got to have those purposes. If you choose just not to use a tax rate, and you're just going to spend $6 million to buy it, you still have to have a public purpose, and it has to be a public purpose that we're authorized to do. But you have to have, you have to, you just can't buy land to speculate. You've got to have a reason for buying it. And the reason can't be to stop development. The reason has to be, it needs to be put to a public use, and you have to identify what that public use is you're going to use it for. So if you choose to buy it, determine what you're buying it for. You're going to make it a park, you're going to do something with it that the county's authorized to do, build a fire station, whatever it is you're going to do, you have to identify that to buy it with cash. If you're going to buy it with a tax rate, you can only do those 10 things I just listed a minute ago. One of the commissioners asked me, what about condemnation? If you just wanted to take it from him without his consent and you condemned it, then the way the condemnation works is you have to give them 30 days notice that you intend to condemn it. And once you've given that notice, then you file a lawsuit condemning it, and then you deposit what you believe the fair market value is. In our case, we used $1,028,300. We would deposit that amount of money with the clerk, and that money becomes his immediately. And then the property becomes ours immediately. Well, what happens after that is he can contest our condemnation only on two grounds. One is that we didn't articulate a public purpose. The condemnation statutes, just as the list I just gave you for the tax district, has a list of things you can condemn for as well. It's a little broader than the tax district, but it's a little narrower than anything the county's authorized to do. So it has to be one of the things it's on. And I brought that statute if anybody wants to know what those things are, but if you're going to condemn it, it has to be for one of those things. He can then contest and say it's not for a public purpose. If he wins, then we can't condemn it. He can also contest on the value, and he can say it's worth more than what we paid him. And at the end of the day, we don't know what that value would be. We put in our million, he contests it, and whatever a jury says after we have a trial is what we pay. If they say it's $6 million, then we pay $6 million. If they say we were right and it's a million, it's a million. But we don't know what that number is. There's no formula out there for it. It's whatever the jury says it is, and we don't know when we would have to pay it because it would take multiple years to do the lawsuit to get it to that point. And so those are your options. If you want to acquire the property, you can buy it outright, you can buy it with a tax district for those limited uses, or you can condemn it for the things that are listed in that, and then you take the risk on what the ultimate price will be based on whatever a jury says down the road sometime.
Quick question, Bob. The purchase was at $1 million?
At what date? You had that in your initial. I didn't catch the date.
It was $1 million in July of 2024.
July of '24.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. That's it. One last thing. If you were thinking about doing it all in one go, that's a little bit problematic because it, depending on what your rate was. If you were going to use that 96 cent rate to try to pay half of it all in one go, I don't think that's what you're going to do. But if you did, remember that the maximum taxes that you can charge is $1.50, and if you added 96 cent to 57, you're getting right to the top. And if you top out Wanchees, you've topped out the whole county. Because if you ever, if a board ever raises taxes, it has to be countywide. So you really can't take it to that level and have any room for anything in the future. So that's not a good idea, but if you were choosing to do that, that would be something you need to be aware of.
Olson County Manager, if...
If, in fact, we were going to do a tax district or a tax, we would have to hold a public hearing for the citizens of Wanchees to do so. Is that's correct, right?
Yeah, there's a whole procedure. I won't, I don't remember all of these, but the first thing you got to do is you got to send out written notice to everybody that's going to be taxed. You have to lay out what the amount of the tax is going to be, what it's going to cost them. You got to say what the tax is for, and it has to be one of those purposes. And then you have to set a public hearing, and then after you've done all that and had the public hearing, then you're allowed to make the decision on whether you're going to do a tax district or not. The other thing is, you can, if you do it, you have to, whatever it is you say you're going to do, you got to do within a year. You can't, we can't create a tax district today and do it at some smaller amount, and then when we've accumulated enough money, pay it. Like, we can't save up for three years with the tax district money because you have to do it, do it within a year of implementing the tax. So it's, you can still finance it, but you have to close and do what you're going to do, which means you have to front the money and then pay yourself back from the tax.
And when Mr. Anderson got back to you with the new asking price, and he asked you if he should stop the progress, what was, what was, what was his response when you asked him, you let him know that we were having, I said Anderson, excuse me, Alexander? What was his response when you told him we were holding a special meeting and we wanted to hear from the residents of Wanchees?
So when I called him the first time, he was, him in awe and reluctant to sell. He didn't really want to sell. He kept saying he was too far along, he was too far along. And I said, well, I hear you. I said, if you're telling me that you're not willing to sell it, then that's fine. I'll communicate that to the board. If you're prepared to sell it, I need to know a price. And he said, well, let me mull it over, and he called me back the next day, and he said $6 million. I told him that, you know, we couldn't, I couldn't give him a yes or a no that we had a board meeting and that we couldn't have a board meeting until midweek this week in order to meet all the notice requirements, and could he wait? I can't, he was finishing up something that he was doing on the property yesterday or today. He said, that's fine, that Wednesday would work fine for me because I finished this and I don't have to start whatever his next phase of development is until, like, next week. And so he had some gap in there that this timing fell into there.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. Anything else you want to add?
That's all I have, unless y'all have questions.
I got a question.
Yes.
We're going to circle back to the condemnation. All right, I didn't know that was an option until today. If we were to go that route, is, you said you have a list of things it could be. Is EMS station in that list as well?
I believe that it is. Let me get my statute, and I'll read them to you. So the list is streets and roads and sidewalks, public enterprises, those are the things that the county does, parks, playgrounds, and recreation facilities, storm systems and drainage systems, hospitals, city halls, fire stations, building roads, courthouses, and jails. I'm looking, drainage projects, historic properties, public warfs, beach erosion, and public access. Those are the, that's the list.
So emergency management services is not in there, but fire station is?
Fire station is. What I don't know, without doing some more research, is whether, it says establishing, extending, enlarging, or improving any of the public enterprises listed in GS 168-311. I think that means water, sewer, things that we have an enterprise fund for, which wouldn't include EMS.
Okay. Any other questions to the County Manager? Okay, now that we've gotten...
Well, Becca, I'm sorry. I'm just looking. I think we've got another out there, though, Commissioner Creef. There's a provision that says enlarging or improving city halls, fire stations, office buildings, courthouse, jails, and then it says other buildings for use by any department, board, or commission, or agency. So we could, we might be able to say that's a department of the county that falls under that thing. I'd have to check, but that would be a possible opportunity.
All right. Any other questions to the County Manager? Okay. I'm going to open this up for public comment, and the reason I didn't do it in the beginning of the meeting is I wanted the public to be able to hear this conversation along with, I want to hear from each commissioner their thoughts on what's been, what's been presented us this morning, as well as the history behind this property, so that the public could hear what was being said, and then they could form their public comments. So we will have public comment after our commissioners' comments. We won't make a decision, certainly until we hear from you folks. But at this time, I'd like to ask the board to weigh in in their comments, and I will ask Commissioner Burris to start this off.
Thank you. To me, it's pretty cut and dry. We got three possible options. And recreation falls under a use for each of those three options. Any way we go about any one of those three options, if we choose to move forward with one of those three options, they would all be covered with recreation, from what I've read. And the county is in need of more recreation space. We need more fields. That's something we've talked about, you know, already, and trying to locate and purchase more. So I think that would be a palatable use for, you know, some of the land down there, a lot of the land down there would be to use for recreational fields, a walking path, a horse-riding path, potentially a community center. We are going to need those things in the future. We are a growing community, as much or more than any other village in the county. We have a lot of folks moving in, we have a lot of projects coming up. Couple dozen acres was just sold at the end of Tillot Drive that are going to be developed now. So we're going to be looking at that as a residential district down there. The tax, I would like to see if that's option number two, you know, if that could be drug out over a 15-year period, if we were to go that route, just because I think that would make it a little bit more palatable for the folks financially as a yearly increase. It would drop it down to, you know, a couple hundred bucks on a $400,000 tax evaluation, which I think would be more palatable than, you know, 500 to 600. So that extra five years could help on that. Me personally, my personal opinion on this is this was not something that was of the making of the people of Wanchees. We've had to suffer through it, and the county has the money in an account for housing that we could use to purchase this property and use it for recreation and outright purchase, albeit an irresponsible one, but it would be rectifying a negative situation that has grown countywide to be the subject of, you know, some bad opinions towards the last Board of Commissioners who made the decisions. And I think we'll see that today with, there's nobody here representing anywhere else really probably that is going to say no to that option. And if they wanted to have a voice, they should have been here. It was advertised that they want to say no to us outright purchasing it for that price. So that's my personal opinion. I would love to see us just outright purchase it and rectify this situation and be done with it. The third option being the condemnation, there again, recreation is a use, and I think in the long term, even if that went through a court proceeding, the value that a court would place on the property would be far less than what he's asking for it, because I don't believe he's negotiating in good faith. And that's where I'll leave it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Valance?
This actually leaves me with more questions than answers because I didn't find out about this until I got a screenshot of a Facebook post, which was not a fun way to find out. I have more questions. Can I ask a few more questions? Are, is Wanchees have a tax, are they a tax district now? Like, do they, like Hatters has?
Wanchees has three.
Do they have a civic board?
They have, they have our regular ad valorem tax. They have, they do, they have a regular ad valorem tax, they have a fire tax, they have a sanitation tax, and they have a community center tax, and the total of all those is point is 57.47.
Fifty?
57 cents in a little, in a little bit, in a fraction.
I, I don't feel like...
Ad valorem fire?
I'm sorry.
Could, ad valorem fire? What else?
Ad valorem fire, sanitation, and a community center.
And the community center, do they have, like, and I'm just comparing it to Hatters because that's what I know. Do they have the ability to purchase property?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't, I think they do. I think they were created using the same statutes that created Hatters.
So they can purchase property on their own?
Yeah, I'd have to look to give...
And how big is that property?
10 acres, I think.
10 acres, 10.53, I think.
10.53.
So you would have to either condemn or purchase 10.53 acres. I would be more inclined to see if he would be willing to split that. I don't know if he would. I know that doesn't help 100% with getting rid of the whole housing thing, but...
Split the cost of that.
No, well, I mean, does...
He's unwilling to budge off $6 million. I tried hard as I could to get him.
I, being new to the board, I think I need to hear more conversation about it before I'm ready to really, it's creating more questions for me, and I want to hear from them, too.
We're going to have public comment.
Yeah, but I mean, to hear more from you guys. I wasn't there during all of this.
I'm going down the line.
I know. So I'm going to rest with my question.
Okay. Commissioner Ross?
Sorry.
They're done already?
I, I'm telling you, it's creating more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the tax value in '24 was $300,000. He purchased it from, I don't know who, but I'd like to know who sold it to him for $1 million. Rather than putting it in the public trust for the community of Wanchees, they took the million. Mr. Alexander, in, hmm, looks like about eight months, nine months, is looking to make a $5 million profit on a $1 million piece of property using taxpayer funds. Now, when I took my oath, it was as a county commissioner for Dare County, and I am really reluctant to take the county taxpayers' funds and rich Mr. Alexander by $5 million for this piece of property. So that's a no.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Vice Chairman House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm kind of at a loss of the, just like Commissioner Ross brought up, why an individual would think that it would be in good faith to take good taxpayer money of something that we could use those funds a lot better, that would broaden the entire county, as opposed to one pocket, and to astronomically put a price on something that obviously he has not incurred that much cost on. has not incurred that much cost on. Um, I, I understand he bought it for a million. He's probably put maybe another million into it total, even to this point. But to pocket, you know, over four or five million dollars is, to me, just doesn't make any good sense. Plus the fact of we as a board, like I said, we represent the whole county. And in good faith, how could we tell the citizens of Hatters Island or, you know, Man's Harbor or, you know, any other unincorporated areas of Dare, why we could use that money to pay off one person? Um, I have a hard time with that. Do I like this project and what he's putting up there? No, I do not. Um, and I reserve, uh, my final comments for, after I hear a public comment. But, uh, I, I, I just have a hard time dealing with an individual who is obviously not dealing in good faith with us. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Um, Bobby, a question. So we, we talked about the condemnation in the domain. We, we go to court, would they take the value of what the property could be valued for after development? Or would they take the property value at the time of seizure?
What happens is that you have our appraiser go in there and say it's worth this. And you have another appraiser go in and say it's highest and best use is therefore it's fair market value and it's this. And the jury has to then decide which appraiser to believe. And if they believe his appraiser, then he wins. If they believe our appraiser, then we win. If they carve up the baby, then you come up with some number in between. And the problem from a fiscal standpoint is you have, you're now committed to paying something and you don't know what it is. And so you don't know what you're planning for and you don't know when it's going to become due. Um, which is kind of the reason, we, I don't recall us, certainly in my tenure, we've never condemned anything. Uh, and it's been a long time, if ever, that we have condemned anything. Um, I know the school board condemned a piece of property, uh, years ago down there beside Hatters School where the baseball field is and did what we just said. And I think when they went to court, the price was tripled or quadrupled. It went up a significant amount for the time that they did not anticipate and created some problems. So that's the problem with condemnation is you just don't have any certainty on a number. You have no idea. Um, believe it or not, there are lawyers, much as there's lawyers out there that do personal injury stuff, there are lawyers that do nothing but condemnation stuff. Um, I understand Eastern North Carolina is a fertile ground to challenge condemnations that juries give lots of money, but typically that's against DOT. Normally, most of the condemnation cases that you read about are DOT cases where they're putting in roads and people don't want to give up their farm or their whatever for the roads and the juries punish them for that. So I really don't know how to give you any advice on what the outcome could be, except that it's unknown and it's likely to be more than what we deposit.
Right, okay. Um, so Commissioner Bateman, can I follow up?
Sure.
With you. I, I like that question you asked, but you said, we hire our appraisal, we get a number. He hires his appraiser, he gets a number. Do we have to stick with that appraisal number? Or can we add something to that appraised number even with we're trying to condemn the, take condemnation? Could we add the amount of money he has in it for the clearing and the development fees and so forth that he's got into it? So in other words, you, you mentioned, say it came in appraised at a million two. Could we add, could we add another million dollars to it and, and include that when we go to court? Or do we have to stick with the appraised value?
So there's an appraisal method that they use. And if in fact, and I have a, I'm not a condemnation expert by any means, but if the statutes allow those costs to be included in that theoretically, cost of improvement improved the fair market value and therefore we would deposit automatically more to reflect that in the beginning. And so to the extent that that increased the value of the property, then yes, we would do that.
Okay, sorry.
Before I get to my comments, the reason I was asking that is that I just was, didn't want us to probably go through the process and all of a sudden his lawyers be able to come back and say, okay, well, we could have developed this property and sold and made fifteen million dollars off of it. And then the jury come back and award him the fifteen million dollars.
That, if, 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 if that follows the statute and that is the highest and best use and he can get an appraiser to say that's what the value is, then you have that potential.
Okay. All right. So back in the, two years ago, and I had my conversation with him, I was sitting on the big ridge in Dare Challenge and where I had to recluse myself. Um, I asked him at the time about buying the property. I said, well, could we buy it? I mean, in the county, if my board would go along with that. And he said, I'm too far in this thing. I've got three hundred thousand dollars in development costs at this point, um, which means that he's going to have one point three into it. And I'm going to be making too much money off this. There's a project in, that I've modeled this after that's in Arizona. And these things make a ton of money and this is what I'm going to do. And I said, okay, hung the phone up. The rest is history of that. I do know for a fact in talking to some people with the Wanchese Preservation Society, uh, where they have offered him at one time, offered him one point five. Um, and he rejected it. Uh, they had a contract drawn up through a realtor, everything done professionally. Then they offered him two million dollars and they rejected it. Then the county offered him two million dollars. He rejected it with the ability to go possibly to three. He said, I take five. Then he goes and cuts all the trees down on the property, which devalues the property, by the way, doesn't make it more sellable. Devalues the property and he goes up another million dollars and makes it six. Down the street in Wanchese, there's another piece of property, twenty five acres that they wanted six million dollars for, that developer approached us a year and a half ago. We turned that down. For twenty five acres, that's all buildable property. You can put three hundred and fifty houses on. And Verdanty, there's a piece of property that's been a trash, piece of junk I saw for twenty years. They want six million dollars for. The logic to me is why would we spend six million dollars to a guy who does not care about Dare County? Does not care about you? You think he cares about y'all? Think again. He don't give a rat's fanny about none of us. He cares about the money. So why would we, and why would I vote personally to spend six million dollars of hard, hard taxpayers' dollars to a guy who doesn't care about me or my county or the people that I love? I'm willing to and waiting to hear what you guys got to say before I make a decision, but I'm not happy with this thing. I think the project sucks. I think that, I don't agree with it. I didn't agree with it when I first saw it in Nova's desk back almost three years ago. I was not for it then. I'm not for it now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Creve?
Uh, this goes back a long ways for me too. Uh, April two thousand twenty-three, I stood right there at that podium where some of y'all are going to speak here shortly and voiced my opinion on the entire deal and it wasn't a good one. I felt that it, uh, was nearsighted zoning at the time. The special use permits were a mistake and it was not properly publicized. It, uh, caused me to pursue this seat because I did feel like we were misrepresented at the time. But since two thousand twenty-three, zoning adjustments, adjustments were made to prevent future debacles like this one. Wanchese created its preservation alliance, who I felt like did a good job and did the best y'all could have done trying to get that property back and will have it for the future. Ain't nobody going anywhere. The original plans were changed to less houses for numerous reasons, one of which I believe is he ran out of money. We have, the county, I was not on the board then, has attempted to negotiate a deal before today, before this. Um, that was bad information. It was previously posted. Uh, they had tried to get it. Bob, our chairman, went to Wanchese and publicly apologized. And, uh, I chose to forgive him that day. And, uh, it's one of the best decisions that I've made personally. He's been an incredible help to me through this entire process of me taking office and going into now. Mr. Alexander wants six million dollars for this property that I believe all of us in here know is obviously not worth six million dollars. Another issue I have is I don't like to not keep promises. One of the things I campaigned on was I was going to lower taxes, not raise them. Um, we just got those tax numbers based on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. What about Mr. Bayless? How much is his going to go up? How much are our business owners, our boat builders, our fish houses, which are already struggling? We've got another situation with all the people who own boats in Wanchese. That's part of their property taxes. Certainly commercial boats who are also struggling because of legislation. We've got appraisals coming up, which obviously means that our tax rate, even though it would stay the same, our taxes would go up, whatever percentage our appraisals go up. I am going to push for tax neutrality in which we lower rates, no matter how historic of a rate drop we have to do to keep people in the same tax rate as what they're paying now. And I've heard numerous people on this board suggesting the same thing. We want to lower taxes, people. If Mr. Alexander thinks he can make his fortunes off of that piece of property, before he's even put a pole in the ground, I'm not going to let him do that. He's going to have to work, just like everybody in Wanchese works to make his money. He's not going to grease us for six million dollars because it's not the right thing to do for me to sit in this chair and just say, oh yeah, sure, everybody can pay more property taxes for ten years. Not without proper discussion. Now, if everybody comes up here and they've got different thoughts on it, I'd be glad to hear it. But I'm going, I gotta work for my money. I'm gonna make him work for his money. What if he can't sell a house? What if he gets them all built and he can't sell them? He might come back down the road and give us a better offer. That'll be it for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Creve. Um, I certainly echo some of the same comments as my fellow commissioners. Um, you know, we purchased some properties in the last six to twelve months, three or four different properties. Um, I'll give you one example is, um, the property that, um, we're building the youth center on in Mania. Um, we paid the lines, the, uh, masons for that property, to purchase that property. And we, we paid a fair market price for that property. Um, just within the last thirty days, we've purchased an adjacent property next to, um, the, um, Masonic Lodge there that we've built, that we've built the youth center on. And we paid fair market value for it. Um, um, taken back of the greed from Mr. Alexander, when we, uh, earnestly reached out to him to purchase the property, uh, at the time, I thought was a certainly more than fair market value. Our board, prior to the three new board members on here now, um, was willing to at least go up to three million dollars when he had paid, uh, a million bucks for the property. And, um, and he turned us down. And then to, to come back and say five million and, and then he clearcuts it and we reach out again, one last effort. Uh, I told the citizens when I went down to, uh, Wanchese that we'd do everything we possibly could to, to make this work and we'd, we'd try every thing, every angle that we could. I commend Commissioner Burrus for, for, uh, making the recommendation about the tax, um, issue for the residents down there. I'm, I'm anxious to hear what, um, you folks have to say about that. But in good conscience, I, I, I can't, I can't support purchasing that property for six million dollars. I mean, that's ludicrous. Uh, when he, when he told us five million, then he comes back, clearcuts the property, which I know whoever, whoever he clearcutted the property, he's going to sell the lumber off the property. It sure isn't going to cost him, it sure didn't cost him a million dollars to clearcut the property. It's absolutely absurd. Um, and in good conscience, I can't spend the county's money to, um, to, uh, purchase that property. With respects to the fact that the county has money to outright purchase the property, that's, that's correct. We do. But we've held, held that pot of money for essential workforce housing. And, and, and we've told the, or the housing task force that we, we'll try to keep that money available for them for whatever they need to do. And, and the money's there. But I'm, I'm outright, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to spend taxpayers' money to line the gentleman's pockets for six million dollars. So I'm anxious to hear what you folks have to say as well. I will not make, I, I have some, I have some thoughts about condemnation, but Bobby, you just, you just shot that one in the, in the heart for me on that one with the last, last comment you made about the, uh, best use and value. I, you know, I don't, I'm not comfortable going down that, that road as well. But, but we'll, that's why we're here. We'll hear from you, hear what you have to say. Uh, and I'll, I'll reserve my, my vote with respects to this after I hear from the citizens, uh, this morning, I mean, this afternoon and, uh, and have some more conversation about this. I'm hoping Commissioner Balance, that some of this conversation that we're having is helping you with this situation. So with that being said, I'll turn it back over to the county manager and, and open it up for public comment.
Folks, now's the time. It's been set aside for public comment. Um, if you have public comment and you've signed up, I'll call on you. If you've not signed up, I'll ask you to raise your hand. And when you do, I'll ask you to come forward. State your name and where you're from. Um, today, the chairman's asked me to limit the public comment to three minutes. So you'll have three minutes to give your public comment. Uh, the green light will come on when your time begins. The yellow light will come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On my sign up sheet, my first person is Mitchell Bateman.
Welcome this afternoon, Mitchell. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Karen. Uh, I was not sure if we were going to have public comments, but I'll try to rush through this quickly as I can. Uh, it, it seems, uh, the use from a special tax district, uh, sort of limits what you can spend it for. But I'm probably going to ask a rhetorical question here. Uh, when, when the EMS station in Phil Hills was built and the purchase of, of the, uh, property adjacent to it, did you create special tax district for people up there that didn't pay for it? Or did that just come out of county funds? You know, I, I don't know why you think that this situation is a financial problem for the people of Wanchese. I, I'll digress again for just a second too. Uh, it's obvious from the action of the board commissioners, not everyone see you here, but previous, the, the board in general, that when cluster homes were introduced, it was.
You could not see, could not foresee, uh, the scope and sequence of a project of the magnitude that Mr. Alexander's doing. And so I, I commend the board on quickly rectifying that situation by moving very quickly to remove cluster home language from the unincorporated areas of Dare County in the low density res, R1 districts. If you were high density, it stayed in there. But that, that, and I commend Commissioner Wilder on coming to Wanchese and facing the people and said, we made a mistake. We did everything we could to, to fix it. We changed all the language in the unincorporated areas that were, that were R1 to, to, to fix it. Well, you did do that. But there's one more piece. You know, by, by doing that and admitting you made a mistake, now you have the opportunity to finish correcting the mistake you made. Suppose, suppose that Mr. Alexander was given that piece of property, do you think?
he should give it to you just because he, he got it for nothing? You know, you have the opportunity to, to finish fixing the problem that you created when you put cluster home zoning in all the low-density R1 districts. You know, some mistakes cost more than others. I don't think the citizens and the residents of Wanchese should have to form their own special tax district to, to finance this.
You have about a minute.
This was not a mistake that was made by these people back here. This was a mistake that was made by the board. You admitted it, you went through the process to, to change the language, now finish what you started. It's not our, it's not our responsibility to pay for this mistake, it's yours. It's not our responsibility to figure out how to finance it, that's yours. So take your responsibility and finish it. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Bragg.
Bobby, who's next?
David Bragg.
Point of order, please. Prior to getting my start, starting my minutes, I'd like to respond to Mr. Ross's question.
You got, no, sir. You have three minutes to give your public comment, please go to the podium.
Can I do this first? Can, can you read this to them? The purchaser, the person that had the property prior, Mr. Brad Ross.
Give it in your public comment, please.
Okay.
What's your name, what's again?
David Bragg, Maggs Head. Mr. Ross, I have the information if you would like it. Doherty was the person that sold the property, it closed on 7/31 of 24, for $1 million. The book and page is 27440678. I would just like to say that there are many things that are spent by this board that I question. One would be giving a supplement to the school board for approximately $450,000 per year. I looked at the Affordable Housing Report, and there are many people that are kicking my butt on what they're making per year, and we're gonna pay for their children's school lunches. I don't have a problem paying for underprivileged children to have school lunch, but I got a problem of somebody making $250,000, and I'm going to pay for their children's school lunch. If I have my numbers approximately correct, we make over $500,000 from selling school lunches. So now we're not gonna make that $500,000, that we're gonna turn around and spend $450,000 to supplement many people's school lunches, which people are making a lot of money. There's money we could claw back and spend to purchase this property. I'm in agreement with my good friend from Wanchese, y'all made a mistake, so now y'all need to fix it. We have money in the affordable housing project, we gave $30 million, $35 million approximately, maybe more, maybe less, back to the state because y'all couldn't figure out how to do affordable housing. This is a very simple answer. You can afford, you could figure out how to purchase a piece of property. You go to the owner, you make an offer, they accept it, you have the money there. So you take that $6 million, you buy the property. You take that $450,000 that you're gonna get back every year, and you replenish that fund. There are many other projects you probably could claw back some money in, and get the $6 million back into affordable housing. I read the report, I don't see anything happening tomorrow. So you can replenish that kitty, and the, the money will be there when and if they find out, find a way to do that affordable housing project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have no other sign-up for anybody else like to speak. Any other comment? Yes, ma'am.
Welcome, Ms. Till.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for coming and just giving us all your opinion, and I'm just asking you to consider strongly making the decision to use your power of eminent domain. We need a fire, we need an ambulance in Wanchese. We know that it's a documented fact, it's been discussed before, we need an ambulance and we need an EMT station there. We've got two of the largest employers of Dare County, they have, they have strenuous jobs, accidents can happen, so we know about that. Second, the, the citizens of Wanchese have diligently pursued, pursued this matter, and you all know, we don't have to go over that. But we've offered him 1.5 million. Before that was done, I called up Mr. James Doherty's daughter. Audra's been involved, we've been involved. Sometimes they'd answer the phone, sometimes they wouldn't, they were not interested. They were going with their document, their real estate deal with Brad. Now, I believe that you all need to pursue, I believe Bobby Owens needs to go and see Brad Alexander, sit down, give him the facts that you all have the right to use the power of eminent domain, and this is what we're gonna do. We can make you an offer for the property, and if he, if he refuses, let them get a certified appraiser, because that's what it takes, not the property value, a certified appraiser. It takes two. Take it, take it, get it together, do whatever you have to do legally, file it in the courthouse. It's yours, it's Dare County's when you file that money in the courthouse. Now, if he accepts it, fine, if he doesn't, he's gonna sue. Let him sue. Let him sue, because what difference does it make? We are not going to be able to pay millions and millions of dollars for court fees, and I do not understand all about what our attorney said, while I'm not an attorney, and none of us are here, but we need an attorney with this type of expertise to tell us, "Well, are we gonna have to pay the hundreds of millions of dollars for what he's gonna make off from the property?" I don't believe that's true. If that were true, look at when they sold property in New York City. They, it's the land value and what the person has in it, not what the potential is for a high-rise apartment, apartment building or whatever. So I think we should prayerfully consider it, and I think you should go along and use your powers of the government that has given you for the rights of the citizens. Our whole country was built partially on intimate domain, maybe they made, they made a, a negotiation with the builder or the owner at that time, but the person will get fair market value for their property, and that's for the land. I thank you for your time. And another thing, if we have our park down there, we have EMS station there, we have a park, we can have like a dowdy park over there, it would be beautiful. We could have our horse tracks there for our children to ride and train their horses. There's nothing like that in Dare County. We have the opportunity, and I just pray, and we've been praying for years, that this would come about, and I believe you have the opportunity to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Till.
My name is Craig Parker, and I live pretty much across the street from where this is all going on, and watching about eight or 10 loads of logs a day going off that property. And like you said, he's done nothing to develop this property, he's just taken off of it, there's no, stump's been dug off of it, so it's really being trashed right now. But, you know, my, my comment is just like, I wanna echo what Mitchell Bateman said, that we didn't create this problem, that it was created by this board here or the ones previous to you. And, you know, a lot of times, your best lesson learned is the one that's gonna cost you the most. I'm not for putting money in this man's pocket either, but I am, if that's what it costs to get rid of him once and forever, that's what needs to be done. And you say about using the taxpayers' prop, uh, money. Okay, let's look at it this way. For years, you've been taking water out of Wanchese, and we've benefited nothing from it. When it came time to add county water down there, we asked that, well, being you've been taking the water, why don't you just put, you know, the, into it, put the lines in at your cost and not ours? That didn't happen. So over 10 years, we paid for having that done, and that's done. Once again, we've never benefited from nothing on this. It's always been taken from Wanchese and nothing put into Wanchese. You talk about this new youth center that you built for Mania, that thing's beautiful, looks like a church, it's so nice. What did that cost you to do that? You've never built nothing like that in Wanchese. Yeah, you've got a county ball field down there that's used for recreation, county sports and everything. We've asked for an ambulance, we, we have ambulance go down there several times a week. Very seldom we need a fire truck, thank the Lord, but they knew, do need an ambulance more often. So if it takes $6 million to make this man go away for once and forever, and it's a lesson learned, you know, you changed everything in the wording so that it doesn't happen again, but if you wanna do everything you can to get rid of it, then this is the way to do it. The other thing is maybe a threat of condemnation, of taking the property from him, and make him think twice and tell him, you know, "You gave us this property, this price in the past, and then you reneged on it when we were ready to agree to it, and then you raised it again." And just throw that condemnation out there about taking the property, and if, if nothing else, it'll just throw his little project several years into the future before he'll ever be able to do anything. But I think y'all need to do a little more than what you've done or offering to do, because from what I'm hearing today, you're still not ready to do anything for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Other public comment?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Ralph Burrell. I love it, I live at 154 Pine Road in Wanchese. Lived there for 40 years, lived in Wanchese for 47 years. I'll tell you why you should look at condemnation or spending the $6 million. This developer has lied to you from day one. We stood in this, we sat in here for five and a half hours and listened to all his experts, how this was gonna be a great project. We all knew he was lying then, because he had to change the whole project. He told you he had enough stormwater for the 60 houses, he didn't. He had to reduce it to 48. He told you he was gonna put in six state-of-the-art septic systems. He's not. He's gonna put one in to service all 48 houses. I know we don't wanna call this affordable housing, but it is. I mean, basically, it was going to be for service workers in this county, which we need, I'm not against it. I'm against this project. If there was something else proposed, I probably would've been for it. But this is what I will tell you, you see what kind of a businessman he is. This board may not have to deal with it, but believe me, there will be a future board that will deal with that development, because what it's gonna take to maintain it, because everything in there is private, private roads, the septic system, the stormwater system, is going to fail if you don't have a strong enough homeowners association to take care of it. And what the people that will be in there, the service workers, won't have the amount of money to keep it all up, and when it fails, they will come back to a future board to get it fixed. And I believe at that time, it's gonna cost you more than $6 million to take care of it, 'cause believe me, it takes a lot of money to maintain what he is proposing. I know this for a fact, because I did it for 38 years in the town in Maggs Head. So that, I would think Commissioner Bateman talked about the property down in Rodanthe. Well, I think after years' times, that's what you're gonna see happen to that property there in Wanchese, because he will be gone, area construction will be gone, and somebody will have to deal with it, and I guarantee you, it will be a future county board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
Welcome, Justin.
Afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. Not gonna yell at you, ain't gonna do no good. I'm just gonna ask nicely to please consider buying back that property. I want y'all to consider looking past the scope of, "I don't wanna put money in that man's pockets." I don't either, nobody in here does. But considering what we could do great for that piece of property is what we really need to focus on. Mr. House, you and I have talked about the EMS station and the potential that there is to put something down in Wanchese. We've talked about response times, I feel like I've talked to each one of you multiple times about this situation. My nephew's in here, he's passed out, but he lives right around the corner from it. I live right down the street, I got a 10-year-old and a 4-year-old, and if we were to put something great there, something really nice, something that we could be proud of, that's what I feel like we need to focus on. I'm like Mr. Craig, let's get rid of him, let's just get rid of the problem. Let's just focus on what it could be, focus on the bigger picture. I, I, I just feel like that we gotta look for the future, and we, we could do a lot with that piece of property that could be very good for the community of Wanchese and for the future generations. Like I said, I, I sat there and listened to a lot of the public comment, and I was thinking about my children and my potential grandchildren, you know, and my nephew. So please, if you would consider, strongly consider buying back the piece of property, let's go to work, put something really nice there that we can all be proud of and that you can ride by one day and be like, "I helped do that," and look at everybody down here that's appreciating it and loving on it and being out there, holding events out there, parties, whatever the case may be. Please, please consider buying back that piece of property. Thank you.
How are y'all doing today?
State your name, please.
My name is William Brooks.
Okay.
How are y'all doing? Thank you for, for allowing us to speak. If you're good with that, I just wanna say a quick prayer, and I'll be quick on what I wanna say.
Yes, sir.
God, Lord, we just thank you for this day, God, and we pray it will be done in this, Lord, and no other way, in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, so one of the things is God opposes the proud, but he gives grace to the humble. So the pride, the greed that's been soaked up in this, it doesn't need to stand, and we shouldn't have to pay for it. We are not to be held accountable in any fashion for a mistake that we did not make. That is y'all's undoing that has to take place. Y'all need to rectify your mistake, whether you are on the board or not, you are still carrying the weight of the previous board's burdens, so that is what it is. For me, it's pretty plain and simple, condemn it and let God be the judge. If you say, you know, we pray in here, if you actually believe God, stop thinking about your pocket. Give back to our community that has given every drop of its sweat, blood, and tears to be the backbone of this entire Outer Banks. Without the fishermen, without the people that are down there every single day working their butts off, this place wouldn't be. Give us what we deserve. And something I would ask you not to forget is God is the one that put you in authority. He put you in authority. You did not put yourself here. We may have voted you in, but God put you here. Says that he is the one that puts those in places of authority, and you best believe that you are held accountable for that, and I don't say that in any type of wrong way other than just for, to keep your heart posture in a correct position, to honor him and to love him and to know him. So before y'all make a decision, please make sure that you give honor to him and that you continue to pray before you speak, because whatever you speak today, it will be taken, it won't be taken lightly on any front. And we will support you if, if you condemn it, we won't, we won't step away, we will continue to back you in your decision and allow God to be the judge, and we will continue to stand on those prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade.
Other public comment?
First of all, my-
First of all, my name is Rex, and I'd really like to say thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to come together and talk about it again. Although I greatly appreciate the efforts and the idea of affordable housing, and I believe that's why the zoning was changed in 2018, I believe it was geared in that direction. It kind of backfired on both sides, you guys and us. And if you've truly prayed about the situation, I think we can all come to an agreement that it's about more than money. You know, sometimes you just got to kill the snake. And that's about all I've got to say. But if you pay the man and make it right, and I'm not saying you made a mistake, I think you made a choice. It's kind of like marriage, and then you get a divorce, and now nobody wants to play fair. We were all together in this deal. You guys had a lot of opportunities, we did, to find something wrong along the way. But here we are. So we made a choice, and I think we should pay the guy. I don't think it should cost anybody any tax money. Kill the snake and move on and let God deal with Brad. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Welcome, John.
Hey, thank you. John Bayless, Bayless Bo Works in Wanchee. First, I know you guys have a really tough job. I know most of you up there, and I know it's challenging. I know how this got where it got to be because everybody was screaming about affordable housing. This project seems like it blew up, and it became much bigger than any of us here wanted, probably more than you all, but you guys took quick action to try and correct that. So thank you for that. We are a fairly large employer in the county, and you could make a case that we would love to see more affordable housing. But if given the choice between an EMS station and some ball fields and something that's going to benefit our kids, our grandkids, and it's going to be there for 50 or 100 years in the future, I would much rather see that than 48 units going in there that just perpetuates a problem that we, none of us here, really want to see. I've made more mistakes than probably anybody in this room. And, you know, I try and go back and do better and correct. And I hate to see you guys in this position. I hate to see us in this position. But I would just simply urge you, if you could, just find it, find a way. I don't know all the avenues that are available to us. I hate to see this gentleman be paid a premium for something that, you know, he backed everybody into a corner. I don't think that's fair. I hope that gets dealt with somewhere down the road. But for now, if we could find a way, I would like, I would urge you guys to look to 20, 30, 40 years from now, what does this look like? The $6 million, or $5 million, or $4 million, or whatever it is it turns out to be, will long be forgotten if we make the right decision now. And that's all I'm asking you to do. I know it's a tough job, but I appreciate what you guys are doing, and I appreciate you considering that. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Chris. I live in Wanchee. I might be a little shaky up here because I haven't had lunch.
What was your name again?
I'm sorry?
What was your name again?
Chris Carey.
Okay.
Haven't had lunch yet, so I might be a little shaky, but this is, this event's kind of feed my soul anyway. All right. So I read recently that in our planning board meeting, we had this, the planning group talked about adding some additional guidelines to our special use permit review. And I'll just read all four off here real quick. Okay, so the first one that was going to be added was does not materially endanger public health or safety. The second is does meet all required conditions and specifications. Third, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or be a necessity. And four, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. So those four things, and I'm not going to relitigate what happened years ago and special, you know, or quasi-judicial hearing and all of that, but these are the things that the residents warned you all about. These four things. And, you know, and I'm glad to see that it's being considered now with approval of special use permits. But this boat was missed. When it comes to, like, materially endanger the health and safety, I have an updated plan of the 48 houses and how the septic system has been built. And I also have the drain field that's going to be added to the location. And that there are, and I went over there, I talked to Brad about this. I'm like, oh, wait, you're putting manholes with pumps and stuff underneath each of the cul-de-sacs? He's like, oh, yeah. I'm like, well, how do you monitor all that? So anyway, what my point being is that what he's building was not even approved, and the revised version is not even approved. And so, you know, he has not negotiated or had a straight story about what he was building down there, other than to cut the trees down. That's the easy part. But he, I would encourage you to condemn the property under eminent domain or find some way to bring that cost down. Because, yes, we are sort of an industrial powerhouse for the county. You know, we do need an EMS station down there. We do need recreational opportunities. I filled out the survey saying we needed more green space that was pushed by Parks and Rec. Where did that go? You know, it didn't specify recreation for Wanchee. It was just for Roanoke Island. And I appreciate your consideration in this.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm reluctant to come up.
Welcome, Ken.
I can't think of the right words to use. I was sitting back there thinking about all this. Oh, Ken, man. I've grown a beard since I was here last. It's from Halloween. I was thinking about all the services that the county offered us. And I was thinking about how we enjoy a great life here because other people pay for it. That's vacationers. They help pay for much of what we've got. My garbage is picked up every week. Some of those houses on the beach, it's only a few months out of the year. And the point about that is, is we all pay for this. I had used to fly. I don't anymore. I don't know if anybody here flies, but we pay for the airport, you know? They generate some funds. But we all put in to this pot, even though we may not use all of those services. The water is a good example. Someone spoke about that. I don't want to see this man get that kind of money either. But I promise you, the water that comes off of Roanoke Island and goes to the beach is benefiting somebody over there financially. Their property is worth more because they've got water. So we all are in this pot together, and it's a lot of money. I can't deny that. And I wouldn't give it to him personally. But collectively, as a county, I just believe it's the right thing to do. I'm not opposed to eminent domain either. I really am not. And I don't know if you can negotiate and go through it once you file or not. Bobby, you would understand that better. But I just, I just don't see it as a Wanchee-only problem. And the issue of the EMS station, I probably shared this with you before, we've got water, but nobody's ever died from thirst in Wanchee. But folks have died from heart attacks and strokes and things like that because we don't have an EMS station. So it's just a mixed bag, but if we approach it together, what would that tax be if it was applied across Dare County, Bobby? Not just Wanchee, but if we said, we're going to tax everybody for this piece of land? What would $6 million be, spread out from one end to Dare County to the other? It'd be very small, you know, very small. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Allison Beecham, and I live on Brinkley Drive, which is right in front of where the property is. I wanted to get up here and let you guys know that if you choose to do what's right for us in Wanchee and Dare County as a whole, we will back you fully. It's when we don't feel like we're being seen is when we have problems. Everyone here in this building, we all, most of us, maybe everybody, we all live in Wanchee, and we live there for a reason. It's because we like it. We like the way it is. We like the way it always has been. We want to keep it that way. I wasn't prepared to speak, so I'm probably going to ping pong. If we open it up for recreation on that property, let's not limit ourselves to one thing. Like, yes, we can have an EMS station. We can also have a ball field. We can have a dance department or a gymnastics department. We can have multiple things, a soccer field, all of these different things that we can have. I think it's important that we preserve Wanchee for what it is. If we have to spend the money, spend the money. We'll make it back. Dare County is not going to go broke, okay? We're not going broke. We're going to get the money back somehow. If we have to do the condemnation, teach them a lesson. I don't know. It's not my choice, but like I said, we've elected you guys to make these choices for us, and we hope that you choose the right choice for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Anyone else? See no other hands, Mr. Chairman?
County manager, Ken Mann brought up a good point about the entire county. I don't think we can do that from a tax perspective from the entire county. Is that correct?
We can't do it. I think what he was saying is, is if we were going to raise taxes in the whole county, how much would it cost to buy this? And you're talking about, on the new valuation, I guess a penny's going to raise two and a half million. So to raise $6 million, one go would take about three cents. If you divided it over 10 years, then it would be a tenth of that.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. All right, that brings us back to Commissioner's comments, and I will kick it off once again with Commissioner Burris. You've heard comments, public comment? Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just, you know, when I set out to run for office, I ran for the people. I don't have a horse in this race. I don't have to do this or have a need to do this. This is something I wanted to do. I thought, you know, we were lacking representation in Wanchee, and I thought we were lacking representation from, and I mean this in no offense, but long-term local folks. And I know a lot of you guys have been here, you know, 20, 20 years, 20-plus years, but, you know, somebody that's born and raised here and never leaving. And that was my personal thought on it, is I wanted to be a voice for those who maybe didn't feel like they had one. And we work for the people. We're elected by the people. And today, I think we've heard the people stand up and say, hey, you know, let's spend the money, let's do this, and let's be done with it because it's the right thing to do. And yes, it goes against the principles of, you know, fiduciary duty as far as spending money wisely. Sometimes we have spent a little over, you know, market value for things. We work for the people. And everybody up and down Dare County had notice of this meeting. It was, it was public. It's on Facebook, it's on, you know, public, it's out there. Everybody in Dare County had an opportunity to come here today for this meeting, and they had the right to stand up there and speak to us and oppose this and say, we don't want you to. And not one person did. Not one person did. And in my travels to all the other towns for their civic association meetings or their Christmas parties or whatever the case may be that took me to their town, not one person come to me and thought what was done to the people of Wanchee was right. And I get that we could sit there and rehash that over and over and over again. And it's best to do what the people ask us to do because that's what we're hired to do. And the people have spoken today, asking us to purchase this property outright, and I believe we should do it. And I believe it's the right thing to do. And like Justin said, you know, think of all the great things we can turn this negative into moving forward. It's not just about this year. It's not just about next year or five years from now, 30 years from now, 40 years from now. Because I remember when the baseball fields in Wanchee were put there by the county. I was 12, 13 years old. I'm 41 now. We've enjoyed those fields and those services for all this time. Think about the generations of people who can enjoy what we could put there eventually, not right away, it doesn't have to be. But we have an opportunity here to take a net negative and turn it into a positive. And that's something, you know, we don't always get the chance to do in hindsight when we make mistakes. So I would, I would love to see us just purchase the property outright. I think it's the least slippery of the slopes. And that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Balance?
I have more questions. Will that, as part of that plan, did they have to have a HOA? Will there have to be an HOA on that?
They do.
Okay. And is, what's the difference between eminent domain and, I know the difference, difference, but if, what hap, how do you go about doing eminent domain?
How do you go about doing it?
Yeah, like you explained to us how it would happen with condemnation.
That's the same thing.
Oh, so they're the same word? Okay. So, okay. And did he actually, someone had mentioned in fact that he changed the plans that what he originally posted is?
He reduced. He reduced.
All he did was reduce it?
Reduced the number of houses.
He reduced the plan and then reduced the amenity, the things that go with the plan to meet the reduced plan.
And that was all under, that was all, that was all under the, like, ordinances that we have? It was all done the way he needed to do it?
Yes.
But it was, it was done under county ordinance?
Hold on, everyone. We'll listen to you.
I hear you. I promise, I do. That's why I'm asking the question.
The answer to the question is that the septic system is governed by the state. They determine what kind of septic they have. And so he's in, our S U P says he's got to have a state-approved system. He has a state-approved system.
Even after he changed it?
Yes.
Okay. What, if we were to, so I'm from Hatters. I have in my backyard four monstrosities with the septic system. That is an additional monstrosity. So I completely see where you guys are coming from. That was a mistake in zoning, and Hatters worked to get it fixed, and it's fixed. And as understood, the past board has fixed what caused this one, right? So I, I guess where I sit right now, I mean, I've bought things, and it was a mistake. And I've had things done that turned out to not work out like I hoped, and it's cost me money, and I get that. I'm not, was not on the board when this all went down. I'm not sure how I would have voted then. But I hear what all of you are saying, and I think that there probably is a way we could use that property to do more than just EMS. I think we could look at, we've talked about doing more with our rec departments. We've talked about, you know, during the campaign process, there's been a lot of things that have been discussed that we could do that I think should be considered. I can tell you, if you, I don't know how many, when you go to Hatters and you, used to be, Durant Station was this cute little place, and now we have a duplex that was put up on stilts that is a fire waiting to happen. First responding is near and dear to me, and it concerns me that you don't have an ambulance there. That hurts my heart. That's scary, especially with everything you guys have going on. So I'm, I'm open to finding a way. I don't know what exactly the right way is at this point, but I'm open to considering a way that we could get this property back. I don't know if it's by eminent domain or if it's just paying for it outright. I'll, but I'm, I'm certainly open to it. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Marilla. Yeah, clearly, there was a great deal of passion and emotion represented today, so thank you all for coming. As I was listening, I heard three issues that I was kind of identifying in my mind. One was, do not change Wanchee. We've been here forever. We don't want it changed. That was one. Then it was, let's get the property and use it for something else because we need an EMS station, we need a park. I don't think anything we're talking about here says we would never consider trying to locate, if needed, an EMS station. And the Parks and Rec study that we're conducting is not prohibiting or precluding any additional resources or facilities in Wanchee. And the silent group that didn't speak, because they're not here yet, were the 48 families that might be... were the 48 families that might be, I don't know, someone working at the county, someone working for the schools, someone that might want to join your community of Wanchese. Say again? What were the rental conditions? Minimum of 12 months?
I, uh,
Long-term rental?
During the,
Yeah.
During the, during the quasi-
Judicial hearing.
Judicial hearing, I, I asked Mr. Anderson to commit to an annual lease and he agreed to do that.
So it's a 12-month. Perhaps tourists will come and stay a full year or so, but that's a requirement of that, which is why we were looking at local families. So just to answer the question, I would agree with you.
Uh, that, yeah, hold on. I'll let you speak in a minute, but just hold on.
Yeah. So, and, and one of the public speakers referred to it that we have to cut off the head of the snake. Again, folks, I, I absolutely hear the passion in your voices and the love of your community. I truly do. And, and in no way, I think, anyone here ever wanted to upset that community to the level that it has been. But I, it just was paining me to hear the potential that so many people in the county brought to us at the time that the zoning restructuring was done and then subsequently corrected, saying, please, please, guys, we are so, so desperate to find a decent place to live. We would love to live in Dare County. We would love to find a house. And again,
Hey, Ju- Justin, Justin.
I'm just finishing my comments.
Hold up, please.
I didn't interrupt you guys. Please don't interrupt me, okay? Yeah, okay, that's fine. Heckle as much as you wish. That seems to be the response. I'm just sorry. You just, it's not. Mr. Alexander is now viewing this community response as a very, very good opportunity to extract basically an enormous amount of money for a piece of property purchased less than a year ago for a million dollars. If there was an alternative that said, you know, I understand and I have so much money into it. I purchased this for this. If I can be made whole, perhaps a small amount to compensate for my last seven months difficulty and we could arrange a negotiated settlement, that might make a great deal more sense to me as a fair exchange of value. But to be the subject of that extortion, I think Commissioner Burrus, you said it right. And I'll, I'll try and repeat what you said. Even though this might go against the fiduciary duty we have as county commissioners for the use of county funds. Those were the words used.
And then I pointed out that we've also broken that before.
Well, okay, we'll see about that. But I'm not sure that would make that fiduciary violation right this time. I'm just very hard pressed to see us purchasing outright for this price. So an alternative, a more reasonable alternative, I would certainly entertain. But simply just writing a check, I'm not willing to do that. So, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Vice Chairman House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's very obvious to, to me and during public comment that the community of Wanchese would not support a special service tax. That particular part of this meeting was brought to us by Commissioner Burrus, was a possibility. And that he said that he had the overwhelming support of the community. Obviously, he does not. So that is off the board, in my opinion. Which leads us to either buying it outright or doing a condemnation. I like the fact of the condemnation because number one, we could get out for less than what he's asking for. Might even be a little bit more. Not sure. That's something we would have to research out. And to look at that more in depth of what could those possibilities be. Do I like the, as I said before, do I like the, the project that he has put before us and the changes he's made? No, I do not. I do not support what he's trying to do in the least little bit. If it takes us to buy him out, it takes us to buy him out. But I really have a hard time saying that I'm going to pay you six times the amount of what that property is worth. I really have a hard time with that. And I do believe, as a commissioner, with your votes to put me into this office, is to protect the taxpayer's money. I don't think I could be protecting the taxpayer's money about buying him straight out by six times what that property is worth. I also want to look at this too as, do we have funds in the budget that we can pull from somewhere to, to make this happen? Yes, we do, but what's the, what's the damaging effect of that? Mr. County Manager, you know, we talked about the housing fund that it's in there. Are there any other funds that this money could come out of?
There's, there's no designated funds out there that aren't committed other than your normal fund balance.
Okay.
You, we're going to do it, you would take it out of the fund balance if you didn't take it out of the housing fund.
Correct. I just wanted to make, make sure. And so with that being said, like I said, I do like the fact of trying to go with a condemnation to see if maybe that would work. But like I said, I'd like to get into a little bit more research on that to what the, what the possibilities might be. My heart also goes, go out to the 48 possible families that could find a home in Dare County. I mean, that's still an ongoing problem and it's escalating. So, I mean, I'm torn between that. I'm torn between this guy trying to line his pockets and I'm also torn by the outpouring of affection of the citizens of Wanchese. So like I said, I would, I would like to have a little bit more conversations on the condemnation and what we might be able to approve with that.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. So my experience, I've been doing this a little bit of time. And during that process, I went through quite a few condemnations in the town of Kitty Hawk. The oceanfront was, every house was washing in there. People were trying to save their houses and they couldn't. And so we, the board at the time condemned, it was like seven or eight houses that couldn't be lived in and seized them and seized the property. They were already condemned at the time, but we seized the property there. In my experience, the only people that made money off of was not the person that you seized the property from. It was the attorneys because it dragged on for three to five years and so forth. I am not in favor of paying this guy six million dollars. If we came to a vote today, I would say no. If we came to a vote two years from now, I'm going to say no. But I am in favor of doing eminent domain. I really feel it's the best alternative with the least amount of trouble for the taxpayers of Dare County. I'm not going to raise taxes. I'm glad you brought it up. Mr. Burrus appropriate, proposed this because it didn't come from the rest of the board. And I'm glad for that clarity there. But I would be in favor and like to have some input from the attorney and research it, how we can go through this process, get it done, get the property seized and utilize the things that Justin and you guys talked about. Because I think it'd be a great place for a park, open space, green space. That's what I talked to this guy about on the hill at Dare Island two and a half years ago. I also told him at the same time that you put 48 houses, there are 45 houses and I'll vote for it. And he told me blankly, no, I'm going to put 60. I got to have 60 to make money. So as the gentleman said, somebody said he told a lie? Yeah. He sold a bill of goods to a lot of folks. Anyway, so you got me on condemnation. I'm not going to buy it, but I will work with you guys. But, but we have to have you have our backs.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Creve?
Well, I've gone back and forth on this whole thing numerous times just during this meeting. Obviously, I represent Wanchese from there, born and raised. And, but at the end of the day, I'm an extreme conservative. I am going to be the guy in these April meetings on budget meetings who is going to make sure that our property taxes do not go up. Therefore, I cannot sit here and just spend taxpayer dollars to buy property back that's not worth six million dollars. However, you know, in presidents past, they always say, we don't negotiate with terrorism. Well, I agree with that. And I'm not going to negotiate with this guy either. But I am open to the condemnation and if he wants to fight, he'll get a fight. He is the one who needlessly raised the price every single time. Obviously, everybody knows it didn't cost him a million dollars to remove those trees. But yet six million dollars is the new price. I also agree it was not a board decision to suggest raising a tax district specifically to Wanchese. I certainly had nothing to do with that and opposed it from the start. There will be no district tax raises specifically in Wanchese to pay for this deal regardless of whatever ends up happening if we choose as a board to go down the condemnation path. At the end of all this, we do represent you. We've heard your voices. And I've seen everybody on this board today has been willing to work on trying to find a successful solution to this. But just needlessly spending money is not going to be, not going to be an option. Not if we're going to work towards lowering taxes in the future. It sets a bad precedent. I also would like to state that I would like to see an EMS station in the capital improvement plan for Wanchese at some point. Obviously, I do believe we need that service. And other than that, I'm ready to do whatever y'all are ready to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creve. I too want to echo a couple of comments and owe the respect to Commissioner Burrus. That's why we're having this meeting today. When I said this in my opening statement that I had not heard that the residents of Wanchese would consider an additional special tax until he brought that up in the phone conversation that we had last week. So with that being said, that's why I immediately got off the phone and asked the county manager to get some numbers and to schedule a special meeting to hear from you folks. And I've heard from you folks today. In good conscience, I can't, I just can't support putting another burden, extra burden, tax burden on the residents of Wanchese. Nor do I feel comfortable in spending six million dollars for a piece of property that a gentleman is, well, I reserve what I really would like to say about that. But I've got a, I've got a proposal for my board. I feel like I would, I would be happy to confront the snake that is before us and chop its head off, to be honest with you. I'm willing to, just as I was willing to come to Wanchese and face the devil over this situation. And I, I came down there and I listened to you and I took the heat and, and I apologized. And for the, for the actions of the board, prior board. And I even apologized to the way I responded to a couple of people in public comment months ago. And you folks were very respectful of me for coming down and doing that. I have a proposal that I would suggest to the board that if they would allow me, rather than a phone conversation, as soon as I possibly can get Mr. Alexander to sit down with me, to have a one-on-one conversation, to see if he would listen to my, hopefully convincing attitude to think about the folks in Wanchese and about what would take place if he continued to move forward and build. It, it, he's certainly going to have a lot of issues and trouble with that. But I'm, not that I'm the best negotiator in the world. I don't claim to be a negotiator. But I, I do claim to speak from my heart and I would ask that he would hear. And I would certainly, in a subtle way, drop the hint about condemnation and see what kind of response I get. And, and see if I can't make some honest attempt to ask him to ask for a reasonable rate for the property so that we don't have to go down that, that road. And I'll, I'm scheduled to go to New Bern this afternoon until Friday with my fellow commissioners. I'll back out of that. If he wants to meet with me ASAP, I'll do this as soon as possible. I'll do it first thing. I'll do it Saturday. I'll do it Sunday. I referee, believe it or not, this old fart referees basketball for the rec center. I have three games Saturday, but I'll postpone those games. If he wants to meet me on Saturday, I'll postpone church if he wants me to meet me on church, on Sunday. And I'll, I'll meet with him as soon as possible. But that's a, that's a recommendation I have and that's what I'll offer you, the citizens of Wanchese, to see where we can go with this. And then if I'm not successful or if he, he doesn't hear, then we'll come back and we'll see what the next step is. Is that a motion? Do I have to make a motion, County Manager, or is that a consensus?
I think you can meet with him on consensus if you're going to take-
No, I'm not going to take any action with you.
Any proposals to him, then you have to have a motion.
Well, my proposal would be, my proposal is appealing to his, hopefully, he's got a humane side, side to him that he would reconsider the value.
If he reconsidered the value, if you want to be in a position to say, we can accept this value-
Up to.
Up to or whatever, then you have to get board approval to make that offer, if you will.
Yeah, okay.
Let me ask this County Manager, if, if we're in a public meeting and if we make the motion that Bob is okay to say 12 million.
Up to.
Yeah, up to 12 million.
Guess what his number is going to be?
I'm just, I'm just using that as, as, as an outlier. That's, that's not-
If you really want to do this-
But what I'm, what I'm getting at, what my question is, should we meet in closed session to give him that number?
That was where I was. If you're going to negotiate, then you need to go in closed session to set the parameters of the negotiation so that you have the ability to negotiate with him not knowing what your limits are.
Can we make a motion for the closed session today?
You can do it right now.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion and we go in closed session?
I'll second it. Okay, that, but once again, my, my appeal is to his human side, if there is one, to reconsider. And I, and I don't want to have another hour of public comment, but I'd, I'd like to know from the citizens of Wanchese that are here today if they are in agreement with what I've just made a suggestion to. You could just, you know, all of you can say, yeah, no, or whatever, but-
Raise hands.
Just raise your hand. Great, okay.
If you're going to negotiate, you've got to have something to negotiate with.
If you're going to negotiate, you've got to have something to negotiate with, and that's eminent domain.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You've got, you need to take a vote that you have the authority to threaten him with that.
Right.
Really? I mean, seriously.
No, I understand.
He's watched all this. You need to have the authority to say, this is what we're going to do if you won't meet us at a reasonable place. Without that, you're just talking in the wind. You got to have that. Mr. Ross, I appreciate your comment about, what was it, the people that might live there speaking for the unheard. Who spoke for us when we weren't here when the zoning was passed? Who spoke for the unheard that day?
Hi, Ken.
If the parameters of what you negotiate are what we should be discussing in the closed session, so that it's not out there ahead of having a conversation with him. And if that includes condemnation, then that's one of the terms and conditions of the negotiation.
All right. So there's a motion in the floor, then, to go into closed session. Is there a second?
I second it.
Who, who did? Oh, I'm sorry, Cars. Commissioner Creve, second. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Call the Dare County Board of Commissioners back to order. Turn it over to the County Manager.
In the closed session, the board gave the county negotiating agent authority and guidance on how to negotiate the purchase of this property.
Okay.
Took no other action.
Thank you, County Manager. I need a motion to adjourn till February the third.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance, has been seconded by Commissioner Burris. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.